All right, I'm gonna call to order the January 16th, 2020 meeting of the Town of Sherburne Select Board. We'll start with the Town Administrator reading the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll amend or approve the agenda, and then a period of public comment. And then the first item is a consent agenda with a payroll warrant and minutes from June 20th, 2019, September 26th, 2019, 10:24, 2019, 11:07, 2019, 12:05, 2019, 12:19, 2019. And then the meeting calendar with the next meeting dates of February 1st, 2020 is a budget meeting with advisory and capital budget. And then regular scheduled meetings of February 13th and February 27th. The second item is consideration of appointments. Appointment of Assistant Collector Pamela Douse, request of Nancy Hess, Town Collector, and Eugene Goldfield, Historical Commission, for a term to expire 6:15, 2023. Third item is review and final vote on comment letter to mass housing. Apple Hill Estates at 31 Hunting Lane and Pine Residences at 41 North Main Street with comments due to mass housing on January 17th, 2020. The fourth item, consideration of administration items and routine business. Finance Director FY '21 Budget Development Update. Town Administrator 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Development Update. Personnel update, and then Select Board Members' Reports. Then adjourned to executive session, and the Board will not return to open session for the following exemptions. MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town and the Chair, so declares Police Officers Union and Chief Thompson, Novak Consulting Update. Item 2 is MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3. To discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the Chair, so declares Library. And the third item is MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator.
Thank you, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. Second?
All those in favor? Great. So, on the consent agenda, I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
All of those in favor? Perfect. Can move right through this. Consideration of appointments. Appointment of Assistant Collector Pamela Douse, request of Nancy Hess, Town Collector. I know Nancy said she wanted to say something, so...Nancy?
First of all, I want to thank all of you for your kindness, your encouragement and your support when I had to take an unexpected vacation. And especially thank David and Sharon and Diane for helping support my office because for Pam it was baptism by fire, having to jump in as temporary Assistant Collector. And she has certainly proven that she is very worthy, well-prepared to take on the permanent role of that. I really have to commend my staff. They did not miss a beat while I was gone, so I'm very, very appreciative of that and all of you who helped make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll take a motion to appoint Pamela Douse as Assistant Collector.
So move. Second?
All those in favor? Thanks, Pam. I appreciate it. Next is an appointment of Eugene Goldfield for Historical Commission for a term to expire 6:15, 2023. Have a motion for that appointment?
A quick comment. Dr. Goldfield's served on the Historical Commission for several years and was involved in getting a grant for the memorial stat...memory statute. And I would move to appoint Dr. Eugene Goldfield to the Historic Commission for a term to expire June 15th, 2023.
Second?
All those in favor? Excellent. All right, so now we're on to our agenda items to review and take a final vote on the comment letter to mass housing, which we've seen many versions of. I know we have, I think, the latest version here in front of us that has gone through a few changes since our last meeting on Monday. And Jeff has also prepared a statement, some, a couple of paragraphs to add to the front of the letter that summarize...why don't you explain exactly what this is?
Yeah, we talked about this last meeting. I prepared three bullets with a couple of subbullets under each. It's a preface that I thought was important, I described last week about, or earlier this week, I guess, about why Sherburne is unique and probably not similar to other towns that mass housing reviews proposes for. So, I provided, originally I described it last week, I called it the executive summary, but I decided it's not really that because our summary's fairly concise with a lot of appendix, so I sort of refer, I didn't label, but I referred to more of a preface now. It's sort of setting the stage for our letter, so that's what I did.
And he has copies, if anybody would like to see it. Jeff has some right up here, if you want to grab some.
Does that have the correction of the manganese?
Jeff, does that have the correction of the manganese?
Okay.
There was one correction in there, in the second paragraph, the second bullet, about halfway down, he refers to toxic magnesium when it should be toxic manganese. So, that, that one term is changed in our...
I find chemistry...
That was thanks to Paul. Unfortunately, Paul can't join us tonight. We think, he thinks he has a flu and he...so thankfully, he's not here to pass it on to the rest of us, so...but, uh, but he did make some comments over email, so...
The other thing I would say on my draft letter is the very last bullet has some wording proposing we go with, but it has some data points I'll have to get on Planning Board to populate a little bit, a few numbers.
We'll have that by, you'll be able to get those...
I'm sure by tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I'll call John tonight.
Great.
Send it to him today.
And I propose that we put the executive summary in our second paragraph that the Select Board is unanimously opposed to for the reasons cited below. I would then insert this executive summary there, have a paragraph break, and then carry on with our comments organized in three main sections.
Yeah, I think that's...
Makes sense.
Does that make sense to you guys? Better help us with this?
Go through it, yeah.
Okay.
The next change I would propose is that in the bottom of Page 1, Item 2...
Hold on, David's shaking his head, no.
No, I don't have the first one written down.
Oh.
You're moving Jeff's wording?
Jeff's wording is gonna go right before "Our comments are organized."
Okay. Okay.
It'll be part of that paragraph, and then there'll be a paragraph break for the new "Our comments are summarized as below" or "Organized."
Okay. Excellent. Yeah, raise your hand if you're not catching. Exactly, because I know you're the one that's gonna make that stuff.
I'm happy to give you a markup of all these, too.
So go ahead, Chuck, I know you...
I thought, yeah, we talked about this at the last meeting, the architectural renderings of the proposal. I thought we were in consensus, we didn't take a vote, but that we didn't want to have renderings that the developer could say, "Well, that's not quite accurate." And I thought we'd agreed we would not include the architectural renderings.
Oh, yeah, I would recommend against doing it, in particular sense, you know, it'll come across biased.
Right.
It'll just come across biased. It is a powerful, but it's just like, you know, even with Jeff's edits, you've got here and we're changing, like, you know, we found an error in the word there.
Yeah.
I just urge caution as we're at beyond the 11th hour at this point, and I think it's time to put something in. At some point, maybe 96% is better than 99% if it's on time.
Yep. Okay. I agree. Go ahead.
The next proposed change I had was in Page 2, the second full paragraph, Sherburne's land area is 16...
One second, Chuck. If anybody...I think, Diane, you have extra copies of this, if anybody wants, wants to follow along with us. Thanks, Suzie.
The second full paragraph, the paragraph beginning, Sherburne's land area is 16 square miles. The next sentence begins, "Assuming that approximately one-half of this area is open." I, I, I think we know that, and I would, I think it's stronger to say, "Given that." If I read this and I see an assumption, I...
I like that better.
So I would change "Assuming" to "Given."
You could actually just take that whole first two words out and just say, "Approximately one-half of the area is open space."
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd just change "Assuming" to "Given," if that makes sense.
All right.
Is that...
Sure, Mr. Chairman, just at whatever point...
Anytime you want to jump in, I would...this is our Town Council, Barbara...
Barbara Carbone, KP Law.
Oh, Carbone, thank you. If you want to sit at the table where there's a microphone and you have more, some space to spread out, go right ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Barbara Carbone, KP Law. So, fairly new to KP, but I've been doing 40B work for municipalities for a long time. So, I did have some thoughts, and I spoke a bit with David about the safe harbor paragraphs, and I think the Board could, could include this, but given that the mass housing is not focused on what safe harbors the ZBA might raise if an application is filed and the ZBA is hearing an application. And safe harbors are very, very technical, and the state is, through DHCD, is very, very careful in its calculation of any of the safe harbor statutory minima. So, I think the Board could keep these paragraphs in on safe harbor, tinkering however the Board wants, but I think the letter is equally strong without this section, and then the Board doesn't have to sort of mince words or try to, or try to make an argument that it might not necessarily be able to support later on. So, again, it's the pleasure of the Board, but my recommendations of the Board, consider leaving out the safe harbors, because mass housing's not looking at that. Just consider leaving that out and just really going with the very strong substantive comments that the Board has about the project.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Was that safe harbor, Lee? It's the whole, it's section 1, Room Number 1.
Page 2.
Right now, this was some work that, that you guys put in. If Paul, do you want to say something about this?
Sure. Yeah, there's a...
Paul, just identify yourselves for the cameras.
Well, the KPL 41, I think, when, you know, those comments, you know, they make sense. I'm not a 40B lawyer, and I guess the intent of putting them in, although it's not 100% clear either way, I don't think, is that it would go to sort of the eligibility for even presenting an application to mass housing. If they weren't in the letter, when would they be raised?
So, this, this is a good point to discuss, so thank you for raising that. The safe harbor does, if a town has achieved one of the safe harbors and can claim one of the safe harbors, it doesn't happen until after an application gets to the ZBA. And once the public hearing is opened, then the ZBA has 15 days to assert one or more of the safe harbors. The mass housing is, would be unconcerned with safe harbor, because safe harbor doesn't mean that the ZBA can't hear the application. It just means that the Board may, if it chooses, raise the safe harbor and, if necessary, pursue that through a DHCD process. So, it, 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 safe harbor is not something that prevents mass housing or that could present, prevent mass housing, even if we, we were absolutely certain that a safe harbor were available, that would not preclude mass housing from issuing the PE letter. I'm happy to talk about that more, but...
Yeah, and the second one really just goes to timing. That just says the application was premature and that it should be filed sometime in January, February, rather than November. Would that even be sort of relevant by the time you get to the ZBA stage?
Well, depending on how long that took, maybe not, but the, that safe harbor in the regulation talks specifically about an application before a board, you know, a special permit application, some other kind of application before another body in town, not simply a presentation to the selectman or another town entity regarding the project. So, I don't know, I doubt that it would be available. It, I understand the point that's being made, because this is often what developers do, is they make a presentation on, for a project, and then say, "Well, if you don't like this, we'll bring a 40B." And that's what the regulation and the safe harbor are supposed to discourage. So, but I don't know if this, I doubt this would, safe harbor would be available, because I don't believe there's been an actual application before the Planning Board or the ZBA for an alternative to the projects that are now being proposed. So, I can certainly understand wanting to sort of put all possible arguments in the letter, but any safe harbor availability is something that would be discussed and pursued later by the Board, and it isn't something that, that mass housing is gonna take into consideration at this stage.
Chuck's been waiting so long.
Eric, go ahead.
Oh, just real quick.
Sure.
Is that, you know, this is that certain case where, even though there has been an application before anyone, basically the developer proposed one thing, got some, didn't go over well, and it's kind of like, okay, I'm gonna do a 40B.
Right.
But I will say, though, and I said this in the beginning, stay applicable to what is actually being reviewed here. I do worry about that, because you, you risk factual inconsistencies and you risk just looking a little bit too much, too much desperately against it. Do you know what I mean? And if, if, if that goes away and we simply have the mass housing eligibility criteria and other concerns, it's still a very powerful letter, you know? If, if having this section in, correct as it is, risks having this perceived differently. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah. I just wonder, even though, I hear what you're saying about it not being directly applicable, if I'm review, if I'm in mass housing and I'm reviewing this and I view this as a troubled project and I'm not sure, do these arguments help convince me to rule them ineligible under my, under my criteria? Just, just pure human nature. I see a troubled project, it's got all of these eligibility issues, but I'm also concerned that the statutory safe harbor does apply here, so it's an even more troubled project. I just don't know if there's a benefit to that.
Sure. So, safe harbor, the availability of safe harbor is not something that would give mass housing pause, because they can and will issue a project eligibility letter if they believe the project is eligible, whether there are safe harbors available or not. So, it's just not something that gives them pause. Also, there is really, there is really very little, if ever, anything that gives mass housing pause before issuing a project eligibility letter. That, that doesn't mean that this, you know, shouldn't be done as thoroughly and effectively as it has been done. It just means that just because the Board is making good arguments, that doesn't mean that mass housing will view this as troubled. The 61B issue is, is probably the, really the strongest point, and I think will give the, you know, will, will give them something to think about. But safe harbor is not something that mass housing is really concerned with. I've, I've been doing this a long time, and I've never seen, I don't think I've seen safe harbor raised in a comment letter, and if, if it has been there, it certainly has not led mass housing to say, you know what, this is not something that we think is eligible.
Well, just to take a black and white issue, if I'm at mass housing and somebody submits a proposal, and I know they, the town's hit the 10% SHI...
Yep.
Isn't this a monumental waste of everyone's time?
No, because being at 10% or any of the other statutory minima or regulatory safe harbors doesn't mean that an applicant can't apply and a board, a ZBA can't consider the project. There are cities and towns that are over 10% that continue to entertain 40Bs because...
They want to stay there.
They want the, well, they want to stay there, but also, I mean, let's give another reason, you know, may, perhaps they want additional housing, including affordable housing built in their town. So, mass housing would not see a town at 10% and think this project isn't eligible. Project eligibility is really narrow. It's, is there an eligible funding source? You know, do they, and, you know, basically, do they have site control and are they an eligible entity? And the site control issue as presented here, I, I think is a good issue. I'm not saying it means that they're going to reject it, but they will probably discuss it with, with the applicant.
And that kind of echoes my concern from the very beginning, we're throwing so much spaghetti at the wall, and I appreciate the good effort in this. I mean, I believe the, on the Room Number 1, safe harbor, you really don't move it to the back. Me, with mass housing eligibility criteria, that's what was stated at the site walk. The site walk said, "This is what we're looking at, blah, blah, blah." And then we said, "Blah, blah, 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 blah." And we want it for 30 pages. You know what I mean? I think, you know, answer the question asked. Always do that.
I, I agree with you. If we decide to leave the safe harbor language in there, I know we've worked hard on that part, I probably wouldn't put it first. I think, I'm kind of listening to our Town Council thinking the eligibility requirements are probably what we should lead with.
I think that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Because that's what they're looking at primarily. I mean, and we, we may decide that we want to leave this as a...
At the end.
As another, as another point.
Sure, if that, if, if that's what the Board elects, I think that makes, that makes sense, and I think it's, the letter is just as strong with, without the safe harbor discussion, because mass housing is really focusing on very narrow, narrow criteria. So, I just had one more comment, not having to do with the safe harbor, before I forget. There was a recent sort of amendment to the application before mass housing that Diane just gave me. They're apparently adding, this is a letter from Lynn Sweet's office, that's the consultant, to the project, to mass housing, saying, "Here's a new plan. We're adding additional acreage. We're gonna update our application. There won't be any change to the project." But I think this merits some kind of response from the town, just to say, where, you know, "Please send us this," and, you know, words of similar import, you know, "Please provide us with these updates to the application." So, it could be, it could be in this letter or it could be separately, but I would just, at the last minute, they are changing the project, and they're saying it affects the acquisition price. And also, where's the evidence that they have site control over whatever land they're adding to it, so...
Well, and they also had the letter this week with the parcel that's in 61B, that they want to run pipes underneath, and I don't know if you saw that letter as well.
I, I think Lee in our office has, I haven't seen that one yet.
That was another one that they sent this week to mass housing, saying they're not gonna try to take that parcel out of 61B now, because they don't need to, because all they're doing is running an easement and running pipes underneath it, so...
Change in, arguably still a change in use, so...
That's what we, that's what we thought, too.
Especially the easement, because easements put a title on it, and that actually really changes it, whether the pipe makes a change of use or not, but an easement is, seems big to me.
Right. So, Lee can address that, but I just, I think, to the extent we have time, even, honestly, even an email to them, just to be on record, is saying, "Here are these last-minute changes," you know?
I'd actually like to include it in this letter. I don't want it to get lost.
I agree.
Okay. Yeah, so David, I can write a paragraph if that's helpful to you, or...
Yeah, and I think also with that, with the opinion that the using an easement through a 61B parcel is a change of use, I think that's very helpful in the site control argument as well.
Absolutely.
So, does it need to be in here, or do you think preferable it would be in here? I know we don't want to delay the letter.
Well, we'll still, we still, we have to get it to them tomorrow, so...
Yeah, I know that.
I definitely like the easement and the site control. I feel strongly on that, that's one of the criteria.
So, that's...
I wouldn't mind eliminating the safe harbor, and frankly, even some of the groundwater stuff. I know the powerful arguments, and everyone loves them, but it's answering a different question to what's asked.
So...
It makes us look kind of like desperate against it, you know what I mean? Versus answering the question asked, always about that.
Although, don't, I guess, well, you know what, David, I can work with you about where best, about fitting this in, but you want it under the, the...
Well, let's go through the, let's continue to go through. I know you had the, the comment there.
Yeah, there are a couple of more changes. Well, have we decided whether or not we're gonna include the, what's now Room Number 1 later in the, in the letter, or are we gonna delete it? My inclination would be to include it, I hear what Eric's saying, I don't think this is a black and white call.
I, I think we could include it in Section 3, that summaries of additional comments and concerns expressed by the town, because it is another concern of the town.
Yeah.
I think we could put it as, you know...
So, those will become just Room Number 1 and 2, and old Number 1 will become a sub, whatever.
Part of Room Number 3, which is other, other issues. And just have A, B, C, D, E, and then F will be safe harbor.
Yep, that's, that would be my explanation.
It's fine with me, I'm indifferent, but I know that representing Paul, he seemed to be the homeward observer, so...
Right.
I think we should...
That's a good way to do it.
Yeah, I think that's a way to include it, but focus, focus on the mass housing eligibility criteria is the most important piece.
Okay, so F will be safe harbors at the end?
Yes.
And then, just the comments about not receiving, about these last-minute changes to their application, where would you like those to go?
Yeah, we'll put that right at the very end, just, if they made a last-minute change, we reserve the right to respond. We want more information about it.
So, after, after F?
Yeah, I think maybe we say, "Comments on letters received the week of, you know, June, I mean, June, January 10th, or whatever week we're in."
Before we decide, I would ask you, where you would recommend we put...
Um, I, to me, it's, to me, it's unimportant where it goes, and, and I think it could even just go in an email, a separate email. I just want to be on record as pointing out these things. I, so I don't think, I don't think there's anywhere in particular it's better to have it. I, I just want it to be on record somewhere.
Do you think it would be considered stronger coming from us as the Board or from our Town Council? Like, could you include the letter?
I'd be happy to, I'd be hap...
From KP Law, saying, you know, it's our opinion that...
Sure.
As a supplement to ours, we're saying our attorney is adding this to the package?
Right, or I, so I just write a letter, the Board, on behalf of the Board, I note the following changes have been made, something like that, and do it as a separate letter from me? Okay, I can do that.
Eric?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
From your experience, of these eligibility applications that get pushed back in town, can you estimate the percentage you've seen that actually don't get approved? 10%?
It's miniscule, it's miniscule, it's miniscule.
Just getting our realistic chances in there, that's all.
Miniscule, yes, and I, I do, I did sort of want to address expectations somehow in this process. Again, it doesn't mean that the Board shouldn't do this, and the Board has a, has a strong letter, but the expectation should not be that because we have these really strong arguments, they are not gonna approve it, because their job is to approve 40B projects at this stage and have applicants take them to the ZBA. And that's where the real sort of vetting of the project takes place, so...
Okay.
George?
Yes?
Did you want that letter included in this letter?
If we can, if, 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 timing...
Oh, yeah, I'll do it, I mean, I can do it tonight. I mean, that's, that's fine, and send it to David.
Give it to David, and then we can put it along with this letter. And Paul, I know you had another comment as well.
Yeah, I actually have two comments. I would encourage that type of language to be in this letter, or attached to it, so as Chuck said, it doesn't sort of get a loss from the main letter. And then, sort of a minor comment, Section 3 is summaries of additional comments and concerns expressed by town departments. That's not really what the safe harbors, you know, go under. So, I don't want to do a...
We could do a Section 4 or a Section 3, yeah.
New Roman 3, new Act 4, right, something like that.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think...
That's a, that safe harbor would be better as Room Number 4. It's a different topic.
Yeah, so instead of an F, put it as Room Number 4.
I think, yeah.
David, you got that?
Yep.
Do that as 3, and then the summaries...
Move everything up.
Okay. Do that one as 3, and then leave, and put summaries as Room Number 4. All right. So, moving on past the safe harbor section, we're now at the mass housing eligibility criteria, which is Room Number, it's 2 now...
criteria, which is Roman numeral, it's two now, but it'll be one. Then we have section A, which is eligibility. I don't have any changes there. I don't know if anybody does.
I had one in B.
In B, okay.
The second paragraph says, "The town can cite a 40-year record." I would put that in the active tense. "The town has a 40-year record."
That's a good change.
In C, I would, with my Eric Johnson hyperbole filter on, in the second line, I would delete emphatically.
And this is in section C. Sorry, whoever said that.
Yeah. It's page three, section C, design, the second line, "They emphatically do not integrate into existing development plans." I would just eliminate emphatically as being a little strong.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Deliver script that. I apologize.
Okay. Anything else in C? Now we're in section, well, we're still in section C under design on page four of 10.
On page four, I'll ask you, butters this. The second full paragraph that begins, "The concept of this type of development in the neighborhood is unanimously objected to by residents." I'm just not sure we've polled all 100 residents, so I would delete unanimously.
Lebarski's a resident. I bet you he doesn't.
Yeah, that's true.
So...
I agree.
Unanimously, or?
Unanimously.
Yeah, I would say is, is objected to, or...
Yeah, I, virtually all. I, I...
I would just say...
Unanimously is a black and white.
You could say by, by, is, neighborhood, development in this neighborhood is obje-, wait. The concept of, of this type of development in this neighborhood is objected to by many residents of Hunting Lane, or?
What if we just say strongly?
Yeah.
Strongly.
Strongly?
Strongly, yeah. That's fine. I just, you don't want to...
Butters.
Yeah, I would say, I would, I would want to just say unanimously, just because unanimously is just a hard word to put in there.
Well, it is or it isn't, and I bet we don't know.
We'll just say str-, I think strongly works.
It's probably by me.
Well, if you, can you show me that all, everyone's objected, then we can say unanimously, but it's not, you know, it either is or it isn't, so...
Jordan?
Under Pine Hill residences, the second paragraph, I think there's a word missing, this last sentence, "Even when leveled to accommodate the large footprint, the base of the building would be approximately 15 feet," I assume.
Okay. I had a couple of comments there also.
Okay.
First paragraph, said a massive, say large, sounds small, but I could just say large overall.
Very first sentence.
Under Pine Hill residents.
You say tall.
It isn't tall, you know, but just massive tall. It's throwing out the hyperbole, which doesn't come across as impartial. And the second sentence, "It is totally incompatible." Say it is incompatible.
Yep.
Take out the valley girl.
Repeat that.
Yeah, where is that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Just totally.
Which, where is it?
Where is it?
Oh, in the second sentence.
Pine Hill residents.
Absolute, absolutely, totally. You can't prove absolute. Absolutes are such a hard thing there, and you have to just keep it, and you have to make it...
As you said, we're trying to be, I mean, we are all very much opposed to this, but we've got to keep it, we want to keep it official, you know, more official like this.
I like the reference to the last name.
And I think that's it for that page, page five.
This is a wordsmithing. They can be ignored.
Okay.
Where are you?
We're on page five. I don't think, I don't have anything else here. Barbara, are you okay with all this language so far?
Oh, sure, oh, sure.
Okay, great. Just jump in when, if you see anything.
No, I think this is, no, this is really sort of wordsmithing by the, by the words. So, I mean, I'm, I'm following along, but...
Okay. Go ahead, Chuck. Where's your next?
On page six, under conclusion, I'd like to strengthen paramount concerns. We say, "Based on these paramount concerns," I'd like to describe it as many significant and varied concerns. I think that's a little stronger than paramount.
On these many, should we repeat that?
Based on these many significant and varied concerns.
Yes, I had another comment earlier.
And I, and I'm happy for other people to wordsmith this. I just, paramount is a conclusion.
Yeah, that's a good point. This language was drafted when there was language above like Jeff has, and then the comments were below. So this has been moved, so the whole beginning has to be changed.
Well, help with word, help with wordsmithing. I think we can probably come up with something better than many significant and varied.
Yeah. Based on the concerns set forth above, something similar like that.
Yeah, I think so, also.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
Do you need a version copy of the one?
Oh, sorry.
I think we're...
It would read, "Based on these many significant and varied concerns and the other major concerns set forth above," the select word.
Yeah.
Yes, it's based on the concerns set forth above.
Yeah, I think you can take that all out, because this was moved at one point, like you said. Oh, yeah, Darrell, do you not have a copy of your?
Based on the concerns.
Did she have a copy of yours?
We had put some summary of the stuff that you...
Diane, I've got it. I'll give you a markup as well, so you can double check.
I think that's better. You're right, because you're kind of repeating yourself based on where it is, and yeah, so...
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Page six, second paragraph, first sentence, "The 61B lien is specifically designed to prevent exactly this kind of development." Strong, I don't know if that's actually correct. I think if you want to be correct, it says, "Is designed to preserve open space." Consequently, the applicant is not controlled over the site.
I think that's a good edit.
Yeah, in the second paragraph on page six, the 61B lien, starting with the 61B lien.
The first full paragraph on page six.
I almost never get counsel to agree with me, so I...
What did you say, Barbara, on that?
No, I think that's a good, your, your edit was good. I mean, the purpose of 61B lien is just to protect the open space. I would not say it's to prevent this development, so I think, yeah, so...
Specifically designed to preserve open space, okay.
Yeah, that's a great addition.
I always look for absolutes in everything.
And Eric, you're proposing to delete exactly, prevent exactly this kind of development?
Yeah, and, and say, "Preserve open space."
I like that, because that's, if that's, that is the specific purpose of 61B, so...
Sure, sure, sure.
Paul, do you have any control with that?
I'm just thinking, what if we said something like, "While under the 61B, development parcel is not permitted?"
That's true.
That's, that's true. I, I think that is something that we should incorporate in. If a property is under 61B, it's, it is not permitted to be developed.
Yes.
Because that's a factual statement.
Was developed too strongly, because we talked about even if there's pipes.
Well, we're saying that shouldn't be happening either, is...
Maybe it's to be something broader than developed, which might be used for other than...
Change in use.
Just change of use from open space.
Yeah.
Right. It's designed to preserve open space.
And does not commit to that.
While under a 61B.
I do believe the reader of this, who's in mass housing, is quite very familiar with 61Bs, so I think our exact language is not going to change how powerful it is, but it will change it if it's kind of incorrect, you know what I mean?
If we just said, "Preserve open space and change future changes of use," or alter, alter, let's change it, that change of use.
How about this? "The 61B lien is specifically designed to preserve open space, semicolon, which prevents development," or which, which, oh, sorry, Barbara, do you have a?
Because they know it.
Yeah, I, I just don't like the idea. I just, I think if you just say, "It's designed," or the, "61B precludes, you know, development of the property," or, or it protects open space and precludes development of the property at this time period.
Yeah, and preclude, that's good.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, precludes development at this time.
At this time, yeah. Preserves open space and precludes development at this time.
That's, that's perfect.
And I would have a period then and start a new sentence with consequently, just because it's getting to be a very long run-on sentence.
You got that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Diane?
Yeah, preserve open spaces, precludes development at this time.
Period, and then consequence.
Exactly, right.
Got it.
On the date in that paragraph, it says December 2019. That should be December 30th.
Oh, December 30th, okay.
Eric, it sounded like you had some more.
Nope.
Is it on that page? Okay. Moving on to page seven.
I had two things.
Oh, wait, sorry. I'm sorry. I was just looking for something. Just because there's a reference on page six, under summaries of additional comments, there is some, the planning board talks about the housing production plan. So there's two stages to that. DHCD approves a housing production plan, but then it certifies, if the town does everything it's supposed to do to create affordable housing, it certifies that the town's in compliance with its housing production plan. Do we know if that has happened?
It's too new. It's, it's, it's been...
We happen.
We're being very careful. It's approved, but it's not certified.
Okay, got it. Okay.
That's an accurate statement.
Okay, got it.
There are very few certified plans, to our knowledge.
Um, it's, it really, there are plans, it depends on whether the town does everything that's in their plan. If they do everything that's in their plan, then DHCD certifies the town as being in compliance for a period of a year or two years.
Right, right.
Not so easy to achieve if you don't hit the, you know...
You can lose it.
You can lose it.
Lose the certification.
Correct.
I think Lincoln may be the only town that's continually certified.
It's just if there were, if the town had been certified as in compliance, I would want to throw that in, but it sounds like it's not.
Yeah, no, that's, that's...
We just had it approved, I think, last year or the year before.
That's good.
And, and, so we haven't hit any of the milestones yet.
Right, okay.
Okay, on page seven, we're either going to have quotes or not have quotes, but Conservation Commission and Board of Health don't have opening and closing quotes like we do for the planning board and...
Oh, I see.
And advisory. Are these quotes? Is this taken straight from?
Those are taken straight from their documents.
Okay, so add the quotes to both of them then.
So B and C, any opening and closing quotes?
Darrell?
One thing, just a consideration for the Board of Health, this comment is going to relate to the idea that groundwater is not part of eligibility, but in my review of the design criteria for projects like this, it's always talking about how the project fits into the existing neighborhoods, recognizing that it's going to be somewhat different, but that it still is self-confident. And in municipalities with municipal water and sewer, you can just look at the surface and determine that. But I just think that's a failing on the part of the mass housing to not be considering that other very important characteristic of our town, which is our local resources. So, all right, so part of that, I could see, taking the paragraphs under C, which is from the Board of Health's executive summary, and instead of having the one, two, three, do three, two, one, then it puts, the third one talks about integration, and then the second one expands on that, and then the last one would be in summary. Maybe that would just kind of bundle that up differently. And then you would need quotes at the beginning and end of each paragraph.
And that's fine, Darrell. That's the order you think they should go in. I'm kind of leaving it up to your expertise, that I think we should put them in the order that Darrell wants them.
I mean, I know that helps with the, the issue of whether groundwater should be there or not. I'm arguing that they need to, for very unique circumstances, this town, that they need to expand that.
Right. I'm fine with whichever order. If you think that's the right order, then I think that's the one.
I'm confused about what, can you be very precise about what the precise word, the first paragraph on page eight would be paragraph one?
Would the first, the first full paragraph on page eight would be one. So in the sense that is...
The second would be?
Integration with the joint properties, if that's...
You're just reversing the order. You're swapping the three and one. Okay, got it. But the wording stays completely the same.
Okay, perfect. That's easy enough to change.
Who ran quotes to now all of them?
Adding quotes to all three, because it's not, it's not directly quoted in that order from your, from your letter.
Okay. But you're adding quotes to conservation and planning, conservation, too?
Is, and conservation's taken directly from their letter, I assume.
Yeah, I think that's the same order.
Right, okay.
Unfortunately, the concombs, we talked about at the last meeting, has a factual misstatement that we need to clean up, even in quote. The first bullet point, Sherburne is totally dependent on groundwater for its drinking water.
Neil had said at our last meeting he was going to make a change to his letter. Did you get that changed?
We did.
Can we ask Allery tomorrow that we need that, their letter changed as well, so it matches? Because we had said, we had talked about this on Monday.
Right, but there's, the property's near the prison, there's the project on Speed Street.
Because you could just add the word "almost," totally dependent, or, you know.
It's, it's that close, but we're not 100%, nearly.
Just say it's dependent. I, I think it's dependent.
Instead of, just take out the word "totally." Sherburne is dependent on...
Ten units out of like 1500.
You want to even say, I think maybe you want to even be more strong than that, because we're like 99.5% dependent on groundwater, so...
Yeah, it's all but about, how many units are there under by Sunshine, Darrell?
Totally.
I think we want to say is...
Almost totally dependent.
Almost totally dependent.
Out of their letter.
Yes. If, if they not changed it, we're going to put that in brackets.
Yeah.
Because that's our addition, but I want this to be factual.
And Neil said the other night that he was going to change the letter, so we should just follow up with him and make sure their letter is changed as well.
Can I just add some other?
Yeah, just one second. Sorry, go ahead, Eric.
Just to add simplicity, and take the quotes out of everything, because why risk it? Why risk it? You get something wrong. Who cares? You got the Conservation Commission underlying.
Just don't put the quote.
Don't put all quotes of all of them.
You move all quotes.
Why? You know, now we're worried what something else is because there's a quote there.
Yeah.
We have something under design.
Okay.
I don't know if I page numbers.
Design is on page...
Environmental concerns.
Which page are we on?
Page four.
I don't know if I page numbers. The first bullet.
Yeah.
Page four?
Because we have the same issue there.
Environmental.
Same language if we're comfortable with that, or something like that. With one or two isolated exceptions, Sherburne has essentially no public water.
Where, where is this? It's in the first?
Second sentence.
Second sentence in the first.
Okay, Sherburne has essentially, I think essentially no public water also works, because you're not saying totally, or 100%, or unanimous. I think essentially, essentially no public water is true.
Right.
Except, except the well serving this building, for example.
Oh, that's a public water supply, right.
Is classified as public water.
Now, and are some of the new development?
Small ones.
But that's not businesses or residents, though.
Yeah, we can use the word public water versus groundwater. It actually is different. Since those homes by, the EA by Speed Street and the other ones are on Framingham, which sources from MWA, that's obviously different. The groundwater is different, because this is a public water supply, but it's really from the Indian sources.
You say no municipal water.
It's essentially no municipal water.
I don't know.
Well, the operator's at Town Framingham, and Sherburne.
Right.
We could probably, is that hyperbole that we pulled a Trump and capitalized the word "no"? That's kind of hyperbole, too, isn't it?
With one or two isolated exceptions.
No would be fine.
But we're, we're are saying we have exceptions, and it's essentially no, you know. Yeah. I think we're fine with the language.
I was saying we should be consistent with this language with every...
Right.
So we're not contradicting ourselves.
I don't think we are, because we're saying we're almost totally dependent, and then we're saying here, with a few exceptions.
With few exceptions. That's what I was going to say. With the one or two, then you're not specified.
Instead, instead of saying one or two isolated exceptions, say, "With few exceptions." That's a good point. That's a good point, Daryl.
That's a great suggestion.
So then, then it's not putting a number on it.
I'm gonna say very few. You know me, I hate that word.
With very few. This, this sentence says with very, with very few exceptions.
It really is only like 10.
Instead of one or two exceptions, it's gonna say with very few exceptions.
Okay, with very few.
I also, because I put it in there today, I like this sentence the times after that.
That, it is one?
It's only a small number.
I think that's fine.
And I'd like, on the factual side, I went through what data I can find online, the lists of public water supplies, looked at town populations, compared them, tried to figure out who does and does not have a large municipal water supply, and it's just a small amount that's needed in eastern districts.
Okay. I think with that, change, Jeff, we just changed the one or two isolated to very few, I think we'll get back.
So, I'd like Eric's suggestion to take out the quotes.
Yeah.
So, for, I just want to make sure that we got the language right. Under Conservation Commission, the first bullet point is gonna be Sherburne is almost totally dependent?
Yes.
Where everyone's comfortable with that, no brackets?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, fine. And then Board of Health, we're good because we're gonna switch the order of those paragraphs. Anything else?
I think the Board of Health must be dyslexic. They just now reversed it.
You're welcome.
That's the kindest thing that's been said by us.
If that is it, I would propose that we have a motion of the board to, to approve this letter based on the changes that we've discussed tonight. And then, once it's finalized, we'll, we'll sign it and send it to Mass Housing tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that with the amended changes and the addition of the one section, that we approve the letter tonight and sign it tomorrow morning once the changes are all completed.
Point of clarification before, any seconds? Is it coming from council or are we all signing it? Because that does affect kind of.
This is coming from the town.
It's from the town.
She's gonna add the letter with the, in response to the, to the, to the changes that the developer proposed?
But, but the letter should come from the board, from the board.
Just making sure, just making sure we get together and sign it.
Yeah.
One possibility, I don't know, is we, if we could make the signature page be like, start on a new page, we could sign the signature page tonight and it could flow through. I don't know. We can think about that logistically.
Logistically, we'll figure it out with you guys.
You know what I mean, no?
Yeah.
I just don't have a full day tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, also, it's possible for the chair to sign on behalf of the board. I mean, just whatever the town's.
I'm the one that's least likely to be anywhere in town.
Okay, just whatever's the town's practice.
Um, sorry, Daryl?
I don't know if you already went over the preface.
Yes, thank you. I know you wanted to make a comment on that.
So, on, under water supply, the first, the fourth point, the last word, it says magnesium.
Yeah, we did, we did change that. Jeff already fessed up to that mistake.
And toxicity, as far as they know at the moment, is how much exposure you have to it. So, maybe the word toxic.
Yeah, I know.
Problematic, in other words.
It hasn't never been tested, so we don't know. I thought the same exact thing.
With, with problematic levels of manganese, does that sound?
Elevated.
Elevated levels?
Or the toxic levels of manganese.
Okay, toxic levels of.
Yeah, because.
If you're fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Or problematic.
No, if you're fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Problematic levels because it's the level as far as.
Well, has it been sampled? Do we know actually, is it above an MCL or anything like that?
Uh, the ones are said yes.
Yeah, is it above it? Stick with toxic.
Stick with toxic. Okay, leave the word toxic and say levels of, levels of manganese.
If it's been sampled and it has a concern for it, it's toxic.
Leave the word toxic and then put levels of manganese instead of magnesium.
Levels of manganese, we have that, okay. That's what you mean.
And Susie, did you have a comment?
I, I did. The, given Town Council's comments on Safe Harbor, would it be worth discussing the bottom point again? And do you really want to lean on that in terms of arguing the 10% in, in the preface when that has been moved down to be less important in the letter itself?
I'm not following.
Yeah, I'm not following, I'm sorry.
It's, the, reaching Safe Harbor, we're being told, is not an appropriate thing to be leaning on at this point, that housing will not be impressed. They don't deal with it at all. And this actually speaks to the same issues, so I wonder if you don't want to take that out as well. Or de-emphasize it?
I think, I think just as a bullet point in a limited fashion, I, I think it's fine to leave, to leave it in, but I understand the point that you're making. The fact that you have the housing production plan and that you are, you will use it to move towards the 10%, is a reasonable thing to say, but it is, it's sort of, not hidden, that's the wrong word, but it doesn't have a lot of prominence in here, so I don't feel like it sticks out the way that full Safe Harbor.
Right. And whereas the Safe Harbor was the first section of our letter. By moving it to the back, I think. I think, but that's a good point, Susie.
It is bolded. We may want to unbold it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe unbold it.
Unbold, unbold which part?
Eric's. Last bullet, take your summary there. Last bullet point that's bolded should be unbolded.
And then, Mr. Walter, and I had a question for you. Remember, remember there were some, there were some questions, there were some data points, so I know David will need to integrate those at some point.
Yeah, I texted. That's why I looked back. I wasn't paying attention, but I texted John Higley five minutes ago, but you think that, I felt that those were relevant sections because we have a large number of units that haven't been developed. Do you feel that this section adds value or should we delete it? I'm fine either way.
I'm fine either way. I, I think it's not, it's not, the summary's not weaker without it and the letter as a whole would not be weaker without it.
Yeah.
You know, mass housing is not going to, they're not gonna care, they're not gonna care, I can tell you that. But that's not a reason not to leave it in, if you feel strongly, but it's not.
I think it just undercuts a little bit the NIMBY, we're against, any suggestion we're against affordable housing. I'd leave it in, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we can get the, the reason I asked was if I'm somehow having trouble with John Higley, maybe our fallback is delete this one.
Well, you could probably, Gino will be in in the morning, I assume.
Actually, John's up in rural Maine. He's probably not reachable.
Oh, really?
I have comments earlier from Gino and John Higley that will go a little over.
On, on my intro letter? Because I sent it to you earlier today.
It's not comments on that, no.
No, okay. Well, all right, I'll come over to Gino.
The first, I mean, the first, I think the point that you're making and the first and the fourth bullet points make, are good detail, so I would, those are the ones that I would want to preserve. If, assuming the board wants to make that point, these aren't, you know, there's not a market for, clearly there's not a market for this. Again, not something mass housing will care about because they're just looking for eligibility.
Yeah.
But that's sort of fewer data points. But again, there is the, it's sort of, you don't want to look like NIMBY's, you know, argument, which I think is also a good one.
Yeah.
It's really.
We want to look like Lincoln.
It's just the gut, you know, that's sort of the collective gut feeling, if there is such a thing, of the board, whether it wants to keep that in or not. Again, it wouldn't, the letter's not weaker if, if that's removed.
Okay.
All right, so you made the motion.
Made the motion with these edits to accept.
Approve and sign the letter.
Sign the letter.
And send to Mass Housing tomorrow.
As edited. Sign, set it up tomorrow.
Second, all those in favor? Okay, thank you to everyone who's helped us through this process. It's been, been a lot of work.
It's been rough.
And thank you, Barbara, for coming tonight.
It's my pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the consideration of administration items and routine business, finance director, budget.
Okay, all the budgets have been submitted and uploaded into.
Thanks for coming, Pete.
Uploaded into Vadar. I have been sending reports out. I've, I did send reports out to all the departments.
If you want to give it a minute, just until the conversation dies, then we'll just. Because Diane's interrupting us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't need two groups tonight, though.
All right, go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, just a brief update. All the budgets have been received and loaded into our Vadar system. I have been sending reports out to the budget makers so that they can review them, make sure they're comfortable with the data. I've also asked them for some written narratives. I will be, I will be creating budget books for you for the, for the meeting on February 1st. I've started that already. They should be finished by midweek next week. The only budget that's not in the system yet is police because they're gonna be reviewing, talking about that this evening. And, you know.
I saw the first run of the budget model. Thank you for sending that over. I see, I mean, it's not extreme, but, and there's work to be done, obviously.
Yes, but, yeah, but I think people did a pretty good job.
Yeah, for the most part.
Much better than, yeah, so.
It's a good, I think it's a good start, starting point, and there's room to be, there's room to come down.
Yep.
Not down.
Abs, oh, absolutely, yeah, so. And Heidi and I are working on the debt service.
I didn't, I downloaded it, but I didn't look at it yet.
How's the implementation of Vadar going?
For the billing aspect, for everything?
The whole program.
They're really cooperative. The person that I'm dealing with is helping me to design, to customize reports. For example, Sean wanted something, he wanted to have all of his departments roll up into one, so that they're working with me on that, so. But, and then, you know, the next step is the quarterly billing and Pam's been involved in that and Heidi and. So, yeah, we're moving right along. They're very cooperative.
How are you two seeing Vadar so far?
I haven't seen anything.
No, I'm saying like, working with it, have you?
I've been working with it all along.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
It seems easier to work with and.
It'll be easier once we have a full system.
Okay. Excellent.
But again, their, their customer service is excellent, very, very cooperative, so I really appreciate that, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think, I saw an email. I didn't follow up on it, but you've, you're getting the capital items in as well, is that?
Yes, yeah. Yep, Sean's gonna get me his numbers. Right, Sean?
All right. The next item on the agenda is from Town Administrator, the 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Development Update. See, we have our first draft of the checklist.
Yeah, and we already have changes.
Okay.
Under the capital items, those red items starting at number 11, Articles 12 and 13, Pine Hill Access Road and Parking Lot and Pine Hill School placeholder.
Yep.
Those are just capital items K and L. They're not.
Oh, they're not gonna be 12 and 13?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, it re-numbers to 24, not 26.
Okay, wow. Seems, uh.
The first, the yellow ones on the left, the first, up to number 10, are all pretty much the standard ones except for the treasurer articles on four and five. One is the trust fund and the other's applying prudent investor standard for library trusts.
Okay, that's a new one. That's something to vote about.
I think that only has to get voted once.
Were, were the library trustees on, on that issue? Are they?
We have a meeting on Tuesday night to discuss it, but we're generally supporting.
Okay, I just, let's coordinate.
And we are. Hank can work with Heidi.
It's safer to.
Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
It's safer, you, you have more protections by voting it and saying.
It's a broader coverage, so by putting prudent investor allows a lot more leeway, and that will be beneficial.
Good, good.
It's consistent with what we've done.
Okay, no, just. We only had one citizen petition.
One citizen petition on traffic study for Pine Hill school start times.
It had, it was kind of a strange wording because it's like vote to do a traffic study and then vote to delay the school's start times, which really, I have a question of even the legality of the town voting for that because that's under the school committee's jurisdiction.
Yeah, I mean, that often happens.
From what I've heard in Dover, they didn't even, they discouraged the citizens from putting it onto it because the town doesn't have jurisdiction over start times, the school committee still.
The thing is, we don't get, a lot of these, we don't even hear anything about until they're turned in.
Right.
When we really could be helping form from the beginning.
Right.
My favorite of the petitions that don't have language. Um, quick question about some of the capitals. Is there any, do we know what item, oh, I just lost it. C, security upgrade enhancement. Any idea what that is?
That's like closed circuit television, security upgrade at the police department, plus some, probably wrapped in with that building access control at fire department. They're kind of working on that together.
And what about tree removal? Is there gonna be any requests for additional?
That's not considered capital.
That wouldn't be capital, that's right.
It's actually, we had a separate article.
Standard budget.
I hope I didn't miss that. I, I don't, I think they pulled up the warrant last year because of the way they did it.
Is that true?
We had, what happened last year, it's in the operating budget, we had $50,000 in there, but we added $150,000 from our general stabilization fund to transfer.
Oh, right, that's right.
And that's how we got to the 200,000, I think.
But it wasn't a vote.
Yes, we, we had to vote, yeah, we had to vote at town meeting to transfer the money from the stabilization fund.
That's right.
You're asking if it was an election vote is what you're asking. Not, not.
No, if I didn't put it on the warrant, you meant it's real.
No, it was in the warrant as a transfer.
Not in this one?
No.
No, because last year we did it as a transfer from the stabilization fund. That was the way we funded it.
Well, partially, it was, we kept the 50.
I might have it like this.
It's in this year's budget, but it can carry over, I would assume. I don't know.
Well, I mean, as we talk about the budget, no one's gonna want to put 150,000 in the budget. If we didn't the past two years, we probably won't this year.
Yeah, well, we, we didn't change the main budget. We just added this separately. Maybe, have to look at that, whether, should.
But I don't know if we would be, we wouldn't be doing that again, right? Heidi, I mean, we wouldn't want to. It was like a one-time thing to take it out of the stabilization fund. That's not something we can do on an annual basis.
No, no, we never want to do that, but I wonder if the funds have to all be expended this.
If we have to vote them as not so much a capital item, but a special item, or, I don't know how.
Well, I'm just wondering if the funds were transferred, but they're not all used up this year, if there's a way in which we can carry them over.
I'm sure Sean's probably used.
That's my guess.
You've used all the tree money from. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. All money from last year is gone.
But I would think it's an appropriation of funds. We don't, like, when you get the fire truck, you don't appropriate the funds. We're not using all within that same fiscal year because of.
Well, and that was part of the reason we did that, so you wouldn't tie me to a fiscal year because that's not.
Whatever he's using, if he used 100, you still have 50 left.
Right.
But if we don't account for something now, we're 18 months before you fund it, unless it's a reserve fund.
Right, if it's not in your operating budget, then we have to have it somewhere else appropriated.
But the trees, it's not dying, so it's not a problem anymore, right?
Yeah, fortunately, that, not. It will.
Some people don't want you to cut any of them down, so, even if they are dead.
Right. And now, on the way to my meeting, I got to go to the side of Mason Road.
Letter I, that says stormwater. We haven't requested stormwater money in a while. That may have to be its own separate article, not a capital, but I gotta, I gotta check.
That's fine, because we can, I mean, it's, it's in there, so we can reorder it or put it as its own more article if we need to.
Is, is this what you call definition of capital? Is that town rules, is that based off state guidance, or both?
We usually go by an asset that has a.
Value of 25,000 in over five years?
Correct.
Yeah.
Although, we made it.
Three years, she said.
Three years, yeah.
Just because Framingham has a more stringent requirement than that, we've always made stormwater MS4 compliance capital.
The regional. Stormwater is capital, you said?
Yes, specifically MS4 compliance, specifically.
Even if consulting?
Exactly like that. As long as it goes into support essentially, yeah, goes into support of a project, it would be capital. Yeah, even, even, even plans can be considered capital. Even, even, even plans can be considered capital.
So we're just...
And we capitalized the original one, and I think it was town meeting or budget year 12, right?
Yeah.
It was void wire.
Yeah.
And it's, it's now, we'll finally finish it.
That is true, but that's also because we thought that the NIMBYs was going to be issued like that year or the next year, and it got pushed five years, so there's a little...
Right.
It's not quite as long as getting the same, we're only two years into compliance at this point, two years into the department.
Right.
Which actually, and they're pushing certain things even further, based on the, on the potential mediation settlement for the lawsuits. And there are actually, there are actually increasing requirements for towns within the Charles River Watershed Association, so what is what the number will be?
The regional school number is likely to do the roof, we roofed one or two schools up.
I don't think it's this year.
It's next year.
They've pushed it off for...
Pushed it off a year. Well, it also gets at the excess of efficiency balance, too.
You're talking about middle or high school?
Yeah.
They're both, they're within, probably one next year, one the year after, and then Pine Hill the year after that, possibly, so...
Twenty-two and 23 is what it says.
Right, but there, there are none in issue from...
So Eric, the criteria for capital is $10,000 or more, useful life of at least five years.
Okay, five years.
Yeah.
And that's an easy threshold.
And I think that's why we, at one point, where did we end up with, like, the police vehicles? Because at one point, they were in operating budgets, and then we moved them to capital.
We took them out of the operating budgets and moved them to capital.
Right. They were kind of complicated, too, because we were, I'm glad to see only one vehicle here, because they were doing two one year, one the next year, because they wanted that frequency, so...
Although it is the expensive vehicle.
They're very expensive vehicles.
No, well, it's the town.
Tahoe, I know, I know, we already bought one, that's what Lieutenant Bento drives.
And then, Article 25 is something that I kind of put a placeholder in there, just knowing, I think we should, on one of our next meetings, the developer, Roy McDowell from Basedon Development's going to want to come and meet with us to show, when he, he's going to have plans and, and want to talk to us about what he wants to do on that site, so I will, when I, when I talk to him, Diane, I'll have him get in touch with you, so he can schedule...
Sounds good.
Schedule, get on our schedule.
Yeah.
I think it's worth discussing, I think it's a smart, we'll have to decide whether we want a warrant.
Right, and that's why I put a placeholder there, and we can always take it off.
But it's actually a positive, but, you know, when it was originally approved, and we discussed Monday night, that we actually only approved the 40D part, not the apartments, but...
No, vice versa, we approved the apartments as an EA, and not the 40D part.
Oh, is that what we did, but we actually approved it, approved of it with private wells on the site and some kind of wastewater.
Right.
Just so that it's, so we didn't, when it was originally approved, although this is a major positive, we didn't include Framingham and NADIC.
Mm-hmm, right. So I think it's, it's worth, like I said, in one of our meetings in February, we will have them in, and we'll discuss where they're at, and, and see, I, I think the reason for an article could be, there's a potential that they may want more than the 88 units, which would put us over the 10%, and through like 20, 30 potentially, you know, so we've got to see where they want to be at, and what makes sense for the town, and especially if we're using municipal water and sewer, that might make sense.
Yeah.
Depending on their design and all that.
And we may want to do it anyway, just so people aren't squawking that we didn't consult them, you know, it may be good for, even if there isn't even an issue, it's dramatically different, people may want to feel like they had a say, I think. I don't know, left it aside, it's a risk, I realize.
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, I, I, and then, yeah, because we've also got to deal with, like, the intermunicipal agreements with Framingham and NADIC, which is something, I mean, that's a big piece of it, that our board is going to have to eventually approve.
Negotiate.
Negotiate and approve, right?
Yeah.
The, I was going to say, the thick red line in the middle of those, one, two, three, four, five, six articles, those are the consented...
Right. That's good, because that moves through a number of articles quickly.
That we just approve every year. You could almost put more in it, I mean, you could put reports in that, I don't know. I think you can go on that.
I'm not sure, that's kind of a Mary question, I think.
Yeah. This, this looks like a reasonable warrant, though.
Yeah, no, I, I thought the same thing, I, I think it, it doesn't seem overwhelming.
Yeah.
Which is good.
David, do you know what item currently number 21 relates to?
Remove sec, the remove section 4.9 of the ZBL Temporary Mortarium on Marijuana Estomaches. No, I would have to ask Gino, or pull out what it, what he's...
I didn't, I didn't think the town's position had changed on that, maybe someone's mandated by state.
Yeah, it's either that, or a new section.
I was temporary, I think we have to eventually, right?